Welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education regular meeting for Wednesday, April 10, 2019. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes.
Would you please call the roll?
Garner?
Here.
Urso?
Here.
Olstead?
Here.
Seshel?
Here.
Carlin?
Here.
Elias?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Excellent. Tonight, we have two students joining us from Emmeline Cook School to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. They are Aiden Lor and Michaela Johnson. So we'll invite them to come forward and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Aiden and Michaela, we thank you for joining us tonight. You're welcome to stay for our meeting, but if you have other things to do, we understand that as well. But we do want to present you each with a certificate as a thanks for joining us and bringing us in the important pledge and also reminding us of why we're here, which is a tribute to students. So Aiden, thanks again for coming. We're family for joining you. Michaela, thanks for bringing your mom out tonight. I'm sorry, we had a meeting that went a little long right before this, and I didn't finish my notes here. We all know that schools and school districts are learning organizations, and that applies not only to our teachers and our students, but it also applies to our board members. And as a result, I've had several opportunities since we last met to represent the district, and a number of events and activities where I have learned some things. First of all, I attended a meeting of Fox Valley Tech. It's an annual meeting for board presidents, and I had an opportunity along with Dr. Cartwright to learn more about some of the programs that they offer there. They have some new programs. They're very nimble and innovative when it comes to creating programs to meet the changing job market, and it's always good for us to learn what's happening in the larger picture as far as preparing students for their next step. I've also attended Hall of Fame recognitions for North and West, both very inspiring to hear the successes of our former graduates and what they've gone on to do and to become. As a result of serving on this board, I've gotten the opportunity to serve on two other boards. One is called the Board of Control for CISA VI, which is a regional education organization, and I always learn a lot from the other board members, school board members who attend that particular group. I also, because of serving on this board, have had the opportunity to serve on the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. And through that organization, for the last two years, I've been a reader for applications from students and from staff members to be named a Cole Award winner, or Herb Cole Award winner. Some of you may recognize the name of Herb Cole as someone who has owned the Milwaukee Bucks, among other things, and been involved with the Cole Department Stores and grocery stores. But beyond that, he has donated hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions of dollars, to public education, private education, homeschooling through Cole Awards to students. And we've had three student winners in this district this year, which is a very prestigious honor. Each one of those students has received a $10,000 scholarship. I was not allowed to read the applications from our district, but they are truly representative of some of the best and the brightest students we have in this state. And it's an extremely prestigious honor, and it also could probably recognize twice the number of kids, but unfortunately, that's not how that works. We also had a teacher who was recognized this year. If you are a teacher recipient of the Cole Award, you receive $6,000 plus another $6,000 for your school. As a student, you receive that $10,000 award. So kudos to our representatives from Oshkosh who participated in that. I also had a chance to attend over the district's holiday break, the El Trusa Art in the Garden. And the comments from the public were just amazing in terms of the quality of the artwork that is produced by the high school students throughout our district. So kudos to all the students who had artwork represented there. It's a privilege to serve on this board. It's a privilege to be the board president, and I'm just grateful for the opportunity and for the opportunity to continue to learn and grow as an individual. So with that, let's move on to the superintendent's report. We have the two student representatives tonight, including one who is pinch-hitting for our regular representative, who is on her way to Washington DC, along with the chorus and the band from Oshkosh North High School. So we welcome Kabao tonight. Dr. Cartwright.
Welcome. We're so glad to have you this evening. And let me make sure I'm saying this right. K. Baoyang?
Kabao Ying.
Kabao Ying. Well, Kabao, thank you so much for being here. And we're going to go ahead and get started at this point in time from the report for North High School.
All right. Well, I'll just go ahead and kind of talk a little bit about me first, just so you guys can kind of get a gist of like who I am. So I'm from the Communities Program, and next year, I'll be the new Student Council President. So Emmeline, I thought that this would be the perfect opportunity for me to kind of get a gist of how it feels to be the president next year. And then we'll go on to talk about North. So last month, we had a lot of great things happen for North. We had our academic awards ceremony, and a lot of students have received an award for the Academic Excellence, which is awesome. That's always great to hear. And we also had Dr. Emmett Blanick come to talk to us about his high school career and his experiences. That included about him talking about how you never know where life would take you, so you should always look on the brighter side. Right before spring break on the 22nd, we also held our annual chili cook-off, and we raised over $1,300. And we had forced construction match up to that, so we raised over $2,000, and that's awesome. And then some of these are like our band and orchestra students. Our band students participated in the UW-Oshkosh Wind Ensemble Concert as well. They performed for that. And they also participated in the Fox Valley Self-Honors Band as well, so congrats to them. And then our orchestra and choir also participated in the All Cities Concert with all the middle schools as well. And so on March 13th, we had our North night at the Herd Game, and the game was filled out, and that's awesome to hear. And we had a lot of participation and performances from our North students as well. And spring sports have begun, as you guys can tell, so our softball teams are ready to get their game on, including our track team, and as well as our boy tennis players. They are recently started as well. And coming up is our spring play, the Middleton Zepha. And it's a play about these people that kind of relook back and relive their memories in the 1960s as they lived through their own yearbooks. And those dates will be coming up right next. So as you guys can tell, the band and choir trip to New York has begun today. They just left earlier today at 2:00. And then we have a college fair night on April 16th, as well as a jazz concert at Webster on the 16th as well at 7:30. And then we have our State and Soul Ensemble at UWO on April 27th, and Prom is also that night. And then our Polaris Honor Society induction ceremony is on May 5th. And then the spring play, the Middleton Zepha, is on May 9th to the 12th in the Jesse Hooper Auditorium.
Thank you. Very nice job.
Thank you.
And it wasn't as hard as you thought it was, was it?
No.
Well, again, thank you very much for that information. Without further ado, Michaela.
Well, you guys already know me, but we have our election coming up pretty soon, so you'll be meeting someone new eventually. But here's West's update for this month. So athletics, kind of like at North, we have tennis starting and track starting up soon. They're all getting really prepared. And in the upcoming slides, there's the dates for their upcoming meets if you would like to attend. Just like those sports, track and baseball are also starting, along with softball. In the music department, there's a lot going on right now. It's not up there, the logo, but the Drowsy Chaperone is going to be on the 25th through the 28th this month. If you would like to attend, it's going to be starting at 6:00 and then 7:30 the next day. For the bands, choir and orchestra, similar to at North, all of them are going on their trip to New York, and they left earlier today, so that's very exciting for them. And the choir also has their pops concert this, tomorrow actually, at 7:30 over at West, so that's pretty exciting. And they're ready to perform at the Wisconsin State Association Conference coming up. And for clubs, the Environmental Club is very prepared for Earth Week that is coming up this month. They have a lot planned already involving recycling throughout the school and really just informing the students on everything that we really need to start paying attention to if we don't already. And it's just a very informative week for everyone. And I know Student Council is planning on doing a school-wide cleanup around the schools, so that way everyone is well-informed on picking up trash and making sure we keep our school clean. And then on the right is, from today, we actually had Newsba for index today, and we fortunately got first place for our newspaper, so that was very exciting for the index. Prom, everyone is very excited for Prom. It's going to be on May 5th, and the theme this year is going to be Masquerade. And then miscellaneous, this, we have a coin drive coming up, and it's going to be run by the Rotary Club. And what they're doing is they're going to do a coin drive where every single day, they're going to go into all the classrooms, and they're going to collect all the coins that they can, and then at the end of the week, add it all up and see how much they're able to collect for the Wildcat Den in order to provide products that some students might not be able to afford for themselves. And then this is a picture. Dr. Cartwright is featured in, and we were fortunate enough to have a teacher at West who was given the secondary, I haven't written down, 2018-2019 Secondary Teacher of the Year Award. Mr. Stelfu, I have him as a teacher. He's a great teacher, and we're all very proud of him. And upcoming events, the Drowsy Chaperone on April 25th through the 28th, and a track meet coming up on April 12th at Franklin High School, and a baseball game on April 11th at 4:30 against NINA. Have a great month.
Thank you so much, Michaela. And that's one of those things that we're always excited to have student representatives coming to here and talking about what's happening out at our high schools and our schools. Thank you very much for both of you being here and for presenting the information. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to our superintendent's good news report, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
I'm going to get started right away with Jefferson Elementary School. First graders celebrated their non-fiction chapter book unit of study with the opening of their first grade bookstore. Families and friends were invited to the school to shop the students' published nonfiction chapter books, enjoy light refreshments, and read a book in the reading nook. The third grade class at Emmeline Cook Elementary School had a chance to connect literacy and math with science through wild robot STEM activities. So what you're seeing up there on the pictures are the creation of some of those wild robots. The students read the book, The Wild Robot, and kept track of the problems the main character Roz encountered in the book. Then, the STEM lessons began with developing a plan to create a robot, which shows Roz and the different encounters that he had experienced in the book itself. Three, Oshkosh Area School District employees were recently recognized by the Wisconsin Council of Administrators of Special Services. Tim Bonson, school psychologist, Mary Beth Connors, transition coordinator, and Heather Walters, school counselor, received the Making a Difference Award. The award recognizes outstanding professional achievement and personal commitment to students with disabilities. Congratulations to these individuals. We're grateful for the work of all of our special education and student service team members. Our middle schools recently participated in the Regional National History Day at UW-Stevens Point. Eight students from Merrill, Webster-Stanley, and Carl Trager Middle Schools advanced to the state competition, which will be held at UW-Madison this Saturday. Congratulations and best of luck to all those students at state. Students at Carl Trager Elementary recently celebrated their growth in literacy. Kindergartners had a graduation ceremony completed with a superhero capes as they celebrated their literacy superpowers. The first graders became the boss of their reading, and the third graders enjoyed a special celebration after finishing because of Winn-Dixie. Congratulations and keep up the great work. Perry-Tipler Middle School and Alps recently opened the timed capsule that has been hidden in the front wall of the school since it was built in 1967. Inside the capsule, the school's community found a teacher and student handbook, a list of faculty and students at Tipler, a newspaper, and assorted pictures, all from 1967, when the school was built. What a great and interesting way for our students to learn about the history of Perry-Tipler Middle School. I'm telling you, 1967, that was before I was born.
I was in school already.
Shapiro STEM Academy second graders recently learned about different businesses and services, along with how supply and demand impacts prices. Students were very excited to sell their products and services to staff, family, and friends. Webster-Stanley Elementary is incredibly proud of Tanya Schmidt and Terry Rusinski for representing the school in a presentation at the Wisconsin State Social Studies Convention. These educators shared how their students are using technology to connect with other students around Wisconsin, the US, and the world during class time. We are very grateful for the many Oshkosh educators that are leading the way and sharing their expertise with districts across the entire state. This is a huge shout-out. Congratulations to Oshkosh's Wave Robotics, winners of this weekend's Seven Rivers Regional. Wave Robotics finished the qualifying matches, ranked third among 44 other high school teams, and advanced to the finals, where they secured the win. The team is headed back to the first World Championships in Detroit. Clarification first, as the acronym, it's not a technical as in the first one here. This will be the team's seventh trip to the World Championship in its 11-year existence. Congratulations and best of luck to our talented Oshkosh Area School District students involved in the Wave Robotics program. Listed up here are individuals on the screen that remind us of how caring we all of our teachers are. We're continuing to spotlight them each time we come to our board meeting. We're very grateful for these individuals and for all of our teachers across the entire district. And though it was spring break, I did still manage to get around and make sure that I'm out representing the school district through a variety of different functions in the community. It's very important, as you know, for me to be present and engaged with our schools and throughout the Oshkosh community in order to ensure that we can provide the best things and support for our students and for our staff members.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cartwright. With that, we will be moving on to district administrator's supplemental reports.
And I do have, if it would be okay with you, Dr. Herzog, I would like to call up Dr. Gunlock to talk about the three written reports that are before us.
That would be great. It looks like Dr. Gunlock has been busy these last couple of weeks.
Thank you very much, Dr. Herzog.
There's three written reports that are in your board packet. One of them comes at this time of the year, every year, and that's our instructional materials and fees. There's really only one very minor change, and that is the Family and Consumer Science Food Class. They're upgrading from $10 to $20 because it's been a lot of, several years since they've made any of those upgrades, and food gets more expensive. So that's really the only change we have to that one. The other two are very exciting. One of them is in regards to our Chromebooks. It's hard to believe that it's already been four years since we provided our first set of students with access to technology. So we are in the process of needing to replace the 3,000 Chromebooks that are currently in use at Oshkosh West and Oshkosh North. They have done a wonderful job of using those devices, and they are used, believe me. So they're ready to be replaced. And one of them, one of the staff reports you have, is recommending the selection of Technology Resource Advisors. That one happens to be the low bid, and those resources are part of the Learning Without Limits referendum that was back in 2014. So we anticipated that these devices would have a four-year lifespan, and they did. It should also be noted that what we do with the devices as they go is we resell them. The devices are basically wiped, their memory is wiped, and they are resold, and then that price is used to defray the cost. So we use that to buy down the cost of the next set. So that works out very well for us. The other project, which is just as exciting, is Classroom Technology Project. We are going to be replacing the smart boards. Many of them are approaching seven-plus years of use at the elementary schools. We anticipated about a seven-year lifespan of those devices, and we're finding that the projectors and some of the boards are malfunctioning, and we're seeing increasing issues with those. What's really interesting is it's, you can tell the devices have become an integral part of teaching and learning, because the moment those go down, a lot stops in the classroom. So we're very happy to recommend the selection of BenQ boards. They're a newer type of board, and CamCore is the vendor for them. They're actually not going to be projectors and smart boards. They're actually just going to be large, integrated, 75-inch touchscreen devices. The good news about those devices is they're projected to have a significantly longer lifespan than the existing projectors. You may, these are also being funded by our Learning Without Limits referendum back from 2014, and they have been in place at the elementary school, like I said, about seven years. We anticipate doing the same project at the secondary schools about a year from now, and would probably anticipate a similar board, but we are not requiring that. So the elementary's got to pick the device that suits them the best. So, and we could pick a whole different solution 12 months from now for the secondaries, but we're very pleased with the devices. We had a great committee that came forward, and we really looked at a lot. We had nine different vendors, which really surprised me in terms of the devices and the equipment. And we're going to be also reselling a good portion of those boards and projectors. We're keeping about 40 to 50 of the projectors so that we can grab them for spare parts to keep our secondary schools going a little bit longer. So we, nothing gets thrown out. It always gets recycled, resold, or reused somewhere else. So if you have any questions about any of those reports, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, thank you, Dr. Gunlock, and all the staff who worked with you on these reports. My understanding is these will be coming to the board at its regular meeting on April 24th for votes.
Yes, they will. Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
With that, we will be moving on to the non-agenda, oh, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to move this meeting along here. Sorry about that. There must be a committee report out there.
Education.
Mrs. Carlin.
The Education Committee met on Wednesday, April 3rd. We were joined by Nicole Peterson and Julie Conrad, and they talked about the Boys and Girls Partnership Grant for 11th and 12th grade students. It was a follow-up to last month's Big Brothers and Big Sisters presentation during the Education Committee meeting, as the Boys and Girls Club has also applied for a grant. The Big Brother/Big Sisters efforts are meant for students at risk in grades nine and 10, while the Boys and Girls Club is focused on grades 11 and 12 students who have not decided their pathway. Ms. Peterson explained that the Boys and Girls Club will be working with the juniors and seniors who are interested in having career conversations. Nicole has been presenting to these students in personal finance classes to inform them about every option they have, whether it's joining the military, starting a career, attending college, starting an apprenticeship, et cetera. From that presentation, some typically sparked students' interest, and they reached out to her for further conversations. The missing link has been having someone present in the building for this grant, and this plan could fulfill that need. What is being proposed is to hire a career specialist in partnership with Boys and Girls Club, who would spend half a day at each high school to start the first year, and then the second year, two full-time career specialists would be present at each high school. And from years three, the third year going forward, the district would need to plan for funding for a full-time position at each high school. Both schools currently have daily time set aside that helps students gain information on several topics, one of which is planning for their future after high school. But having someone present at each school full-time would move the level of opportunity for students to have conversations to the next level. Teachers and counselors can help refer students to work with career specialists and identify student needs, assist in completing applications, and provide direction and potentially provide experiences for the student to help them determine a path. Right now, approximately 50% of students, juniors and seniors, are struggling with developing a post-high school plan. The goal is to reduce that number and to avoid having seniors make last-minute decisions about their future. A little bit more about the position. The position would have flexible hours, creating the ability to work with kids at the club and in tandem with the counselors during school hours. This person will be the career exploration person, allowing school counselors more time to focus on student social and emotional issues. Part of this position's responsibility will also eventually be to track what students are doing after graduation. There's currently tracking on where students are enrolling, but the missing piece is the employment part. It's difficult to reach students to obtain answers, as they often do not return calls and whatnot. The position would be .8OASD and .2 Boys and Girls Club. The .2 is contracted out to the Boys and Girls Club. The $300,000 grant will fund the first two years. Year one is for the full-time position, and year two is for two full-time positions. So we will need to have a sustainability plan going forward to cover the grant after it's depleted. That was all we spoke about during the meeting. Our next meeting is on May 1st, and we will be talking about, looks like we have a preview of curriculum adoptions coming up, and elementary math updates coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlin. I believe Mr. Evans might have a report, no? Anyone else have a report tonight? Okay. Then we will move to the non-agenda-related public forum. We would ask that you clearly state your name and address and the topic you wish to address that is not on the board agenda. If you are acting as a spokesperson for a particular group, please indicate the group you represent. State clearly and concisely the matter of concern, and limit your comments to five minutes. Remember that the use of specific names of district personnel may lead to legal liability. In such instances, we would encourage you to use the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office to direct you to the appropriate administrator. There's one name for an individual who had signed up, and that is Matthew Smith.
I have to seat up here?
Pick anyone, they're all.
Thanks. My name is Matthew Smith. I live at 220 Kaufman Avenue in Fond du Lac, Wisconsin. I'm here in, under a couple capacities. I am the State Director for the Journalism Education Association for Wisconsin, also on the Scholastic Press Rights Committee for the National JEA. I also teach and advise journalism at Fond du Lac High School. And so mostly I'm here just sort of extreme concerned about a few things I learned recently at Oshkosh North toward the North Star student publication there. Those actions, including takedown requests, as well as inappropriate barriers it would seem to put in front of public open records requests, and, you know, some discussion of implementing administrative prior review there. I guess I can't, you know, to be brief, I don't think I can overstate this sort of abhorrence that, like, those of us trained to teach journalism, like the way we were trained to teach it and the way we were trained to practice it, the abhorrence we feel toward, attempts that those could be toward restricting student speech, that would seem to be where it starts to be where it's less based on sort of accepted unprotected speech, you know, where it's invasion of privacy, or libel, or obscenity, or the things that are defined and should be protected, you know, should be protected against. And it starts to seem like, you know, the reason being, well, vague notions of appropriateness, or, well, we need more time, or just, you know, it's very easy, I think, when you're working at a school to be like, well, can we just not right now? Can you just hold off on that for a while? Or can you, it doesn't seem quite appropriate to do that yet. But as someone who's practiced journalism for a while and taught it for quite a while now as well, it's so easy to see how that creates so much uncertainty and such, such an atmosphere that restricts learning at the school. At Fond du Lac, a few years ago, we kind of had a running process with this. It got kind of messy for a while. we kind of had a running process with this. It got kind of messy for a while where concern from some of the school, from some of the school districts led to implementing prior review with the student paper I worked, I advised. And it took several months of, well, a lot of things becoming very difficult to impossible for, I think, the district to sort of learn, for all of us to learn how to do that better. I find, like, just finding that trying to restrict student speech, to have administrators looking at everything before it's published was too time-consuming and stressful for admins. Like, I know, like, I felt bad. Like, we have principals. It got to the point where by the, by a couple issues in, they were fighting over who had to do this. And I know we had to get the school district, someone from the school district to come down one day and like force someone to do it because they knew it's an impossible task. They're not trained in journalism. They don't know what's always legal or not or what, you know, what, if you want something to be changed or censored, you have to have a legal reason to do so. And that's incredibly complicated and you have, you know, not only like some awesome students. I was at the Northeastern Wisconsin Scholastic Press Association Conference today here in Oshkosh earlier with my kids and seeing all the words your students get. And I know you have great advisors, so like, they're the experts, the advisors especially, you know. So, to see how time-consuming and tough that is for admin, to see how much like negative publicity it got for the school district, I think that was an eye-opener. I think there's a, it's, again, it seems like a simple thing to say to students, it's not quite appropriate right now. But there's a lot of people very passionate about this because it's kind of foundational, I think, to a lot of this country. It's one of, it's one of many things that I think we hold pretty dear. And so, rather than stifling controversy, it exploded it way more than I think I would have even thought, even though I was trying to warn the classes, you know, this is, it's not going to go well. And also, I think mostly for me to see in the classroom, students starting to question their own value and the value of what they did, that really hurt. That for a while, students at first were very much, just to see, these are the best students I've had. These are amazing kids and they're in their classroom being, well, it doesn't matter, I guess. And I won't really ask many questions about that. I won't, you know, like, the principal's probably not going to like it. So, I don't know. Like, to see these bright individuals have to spend a while pumping them back up to even be willing to do any work because they don't feel like they own it anymore. You know, anyone who's educated like that hurts. That really hurts. Those who are really trying to make the community a better place, to not work with them, to help them be better and help be a better community, that hurts.
We have about one minute left.
I appreciate that. So, I know, I mostly, I would say overall, I mean, yeah, these amazing students and the advisors you have, doing everything you can to work with them and I, they have their own explanations for stuff. But also, just looking at, you know, some of the school board policies and stuff, I spent a while nationally helping people with our school board policies and I know if there's anything you have that you've talked about already for guidelines that are explicitly not having administrative prior review, I strike. You can look at Fond du Lac, what we ended up settling on, that works great. That would be a much better option. So, it's just clear in the future, you know, you don't get into a mess where you're not sure what I can tell you not to print and what not with the print and it's, the students aren't unsure, well, maybe they just will feel bad this day and not let me do that, where it's just laid out better and prior review is off the table. Because when it's on, at any point it's on the table, less learning is happening, I guarantee you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Appreciate your, your time. Is there anyone else who wanted to address the Board on a non-agenda item tonight?
All right. My name is Brock Damel. I am a senior at Oshkosh North High School and I reside at 3243 Vinland Street in the town of Oshkosh. So, initially, I just wanted to thank those of you on the Board who attended the listening session. It was really great just to, just to kind of give the facts from my point of view on, on the situation at Oshkosh North High School with, with certain articles being censored and talk of prior review being implemented. So, I just want to thank you all so much for attending that and I appreciate the conversations that we had with Dr. Cartwright and the district and with members of the Board. So, right now, I just want to say, this is a slippery slope we're on here with prior review. It's a slippery slope. I published a story, March 4th, that I've had some, some regrets about. Not because I felt I was wrong, not because I felt I rushed to judgment. I wrote a story that I was proud of. I did some deep digging and I was so proud of it and I was like, yes, this is mine. And it was shut down in 20 minutes. And you can imagine how that made me feel. It made me doubt, you know, my skill as a journalist, my worth. It was, it was painful to go through that. As a journalist, my one and only mission is to spread the truth, to stop the spread of rumors, to make sure that the truth is accessible to everyone. It's my one and only mission and the only thing I'm dedicated to is a journalist. So, I would just ask the Board to continue to look at policies regarding student journalism. Figure out, you know, where do we draw the line at students shedding their right when they enter the schoolhouse? What rights do they retain when they enter a school? What rights do they not retain? I think those are some pertinent questions here that the Board hasn't answered that I think should be addressed in policy, specifically in policy with regards to student journalism. Because it's certainly, I believe, a slippery slope to say that administration can censor or change any articles which they don't like. That's just, that's just my thoughts. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Brock.
Thanks, Brock.
Is there anyone else who wanted to address the Board on the non-agenda-related item?
I don't know what you want to call it. My name is Vincent Felak. F is in Frank, I L A K. I am a professor of journalism at the University of Wisconsin, Oshkosh. My home address is 127 Sunset Court in Amro. And I am here on behalf of my own interests in student-free press as well as representing the Steering Committee of the Student Press Law Center out of Arlington, Virginia. I was just made aware today, and I'm sure many of you were as well, about the ongoing situation with the North Star and the issues pertaining to censorship, the issues pertaining to the potential for prior review and prior restraint, and also the issues about what, what the policies are regarding these particular issues. I would like to echo Brock's comments and say thank you for those of you who attended the listening session. I think that a number of issues were ironed out, including issues regarding open records and how the district sees those as important, which I greatly appreciate as somebody who has filed more than my fair share of them. I wanted to be able to come here today with a very simple goal, which is I wanted to help the Board and I wanted to help the district in any way I can to understand the ramifications associated with these actions and the way, how to best rectify them so that there are as few problems as possible. Nobody wants to look bad. Nobody wants to break a law. Nobody wants to live in fear, as some of the students do indeed when they end up having to publish things that aren't always as, as positive as, as some people might hope them to be. But we need to make sure that they understand and that they have the guidance of this Board and the backing of the administration that their perfectly legal and professional efforts will not lead to negative consequences beyond those that are prescribed within the law. Before I get too deep into that, though, I wanted to be able to explain that I've seen this happen before at a number of districts. I've worked with Student Press Law Center. I've advised student media for more than 15 years in multiple institutions. I've worked with high schools, colleges, publics and privates. And regardless of what rules are established, what laws are outlined, what I can tell you with an absolute certainty is this. Whenever a principal or an authority figure within a district attempts to overreach in an attempt to basically prohibit speech, whether it's speech, press, or in some other way the sharing of information, it never goes well. Usually, the goal is very simple. Something has happened. We don't want to talk about it. Shut this up as fast as possible. And I can tell you that unfortunately, that's about as effective as attempting to put out a campfire with a bucket of gasoline. The problems come in, and I have seen this firsthand with Mr. Smith's situation, where I had also been intervening in behalf of the SPLC. They made serious errors in judgment along the similar lines of what is occurring here in terms of what is the smart play, so to speak. When the dust settled, the principal had resigned. The story had become national news. The school board's other work ground to a halt and the student media ended up regaining its freedom anyway. In the meantime, the district became the laughingstock of student organizations, student media, and educational institutions. And as somebody who lives and works in this community, I do not want to see that happen. So, what I would like to recommend to the Board and like to offer in suggestion is this. I would strongly recommend that you allow these, these students to continue to operate as student journalists, that these articles not be censored, that you abide.
Excuse me, I have one minute.
Thank you. That you abide with their requests, to continue to work diligently, and also that you work, as we had discussed in there, in the previous session, to try to formalize the status of the North Star as an open public forum to avoid legal concerns. It's not only the best thing that you can do, it's the right thing that you can do. And I would be willing and able to work with the Board and other organizations in any way I can to help facilitate that. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Felak. Is there anyone else who wanted to address the Board on a non-agenda-related item? Okay, if not, we have one individual who has signed up to speak on an agenda-related public forum. The same rules apply. Name and address, five-minute limit.
So, thank you. I'm Eric Smeltnik. I live at 1855 Hickory Lane in Oshkosh. And I've come to address the Board about the agenda item of this being Steve Eliasson's final Board meeting. Steve has invited me to come to the Board several times to thank slash embarrass me about various things that I've done. So, I figure that turnabout is probably fair play at this point. So, and I'd like to kind of speak on behalf of other community organizations that have been beneficial of Steve's leadership. So, I'd like to basically respond to sort of three things that I've learned from Steve of how to be an effective leader. And I'd hope that as Steve leaves the Board, that this is a lasting legacy for the Board members. So, the first one is that Steve never lets what is practical get in the way of what is possible. And I've learned this, that how many sailboats can you put on a mid, a mid-sized sedan? I, I thought practically, probably zero, possibly three. So, so that, but also that I think Steve has really fought to say, hey, just because it's, the idea doesn't seem like it's going to fit into the mold that it seems to fit into literally our boxes of schools, that doesn't mean we can't take it out to the lake and do stuff. So, what, what I would say is kind of hearing those kind of crazy ideas out and see, hey, is this something that, that is possible and can kind of push the limits. And I know that he's really pushed me as far as what I can do. And I think it has been of good service to the community, both educationally and through Oshkosh. The second thing that I've really learned from Steve is to really invite people in and to invite people. And he does a great job of inviting people who may not even be capable of doing what you think you're inviting them to do, to come and help and to come and participate. And I think really one of the, the big things, one of the more magical days that I've had is sailing with folks who have, who have some physical limitations or physical disabilities and just saying, hey, is it even capable for these people to get on a beach or get in a boat? And Steve didn't seem to care. It was, it was, hey, if we get them there, we can find a way and we can make it work. So, so I think that, that, that type of a barrier is, is something that is a, an asset and I hope will be a legacy for Mr. Eliasson. And then finally, Steve is a very grateful and thankful person. And I think what this has really taught me is that even if I'm not even doing anything that I think is particularly important, being able to say thank you for folks and being able to really appreciate where very small things that people do really help to kind of further the good and further the cause. So, I hope that the combination of the courage to do what's possible, the ideas to invite in everyone, and then the ideas to say, yeah, thank you, continue as as kind of Mr. Eliasson's legacy towards the Board here. So, as that, I'm going to, I know that Steve really likes giving awards for stuff. So, I'm going to get you some, get you an award, the Golden Duck Tape Award.
Thank you very much, Dr. Smeltnik. I know you speak on behalf of many who have worked with you and the skating program along with Mr. Eliasson and many others in the community. And we do have an agenda-related item where there will be some additional comments made. So, we will save those until that agenda item comes up. Is there anyone else who wanted to address the Board on an agenda-related item? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to workshops. We have four workshops tonight, which is a little bit more than we normally have, but these are ones that are very timely for us. And I understand they're also short. So, proceed here.
Yeah, she's funny. I understand they're short, right?
Kate, I have a quick question, Jay. Why did you guys open up the thing, the time capsule, now?
Well, it's, it's.
It's not an agenda.
Oh, you're right. Oh, my gosh. I don't know.
Well, we can, we can address that in our presentation.
Yes.
I like it.
It may lengthen it by a few seconds.
All right. That's okay. I think you could make it work. Sorry.
Okay. I'm Julie Conrad. I'm the Director of Critical Assessment. And I have with me today Dr. Jay Jones, Principal of Tippler and Alps Charter School. And we're here to discuss the renewal of the Alps Charter contract. So, a little history and background. The Oshkosh Area School District in Alps entered into a charter agreement in the spring of 2004. I can't believe that it's now almost fif, well, it's 15 years ago, right?
Yeah, same.
And the Alps Charter opened in 2004 at Merrill Middle School. The Oshkosh Area School District did receive a charter planning grant for $10,000 and then an implementation grant for $150,000. Then, from there, we have not had any further funding for Alps and Alps is now an instrumentality of the school district and all school district funding is fueling Alps. So, Alps moved to Tippler in 2015. And with that, with that move, that really caused a need for reviewing the mission and the vision and making sure that Alps was a good fit into the, into the Tippler community and making sure that everything was working the way that the governing council was looking for, that the needs of students and parents and families were being met. And so, after that vision and mission process, contract agreement was reached in April 2016 revising that. So, the contract was extended and it was revised, but this is coming up here. We're going to talk about a brand-new five-year contract.
Okay. So, really, what we're here to do is the Governance Council at Alps is looking to enter and renew our five-year charter contract agreement with the school board per state statute. So, the current contract is in effect until the end of the month, April 2019, and started April of 2014. The Board, a Board resolution will be needed to enter into this new five-year A board resolution will be needed to enter into this new five-year charter school contract, which would extend from April 26, hopefully, through April 25 of 2024. The proposed contract has been reviewed by the DPI and meets the mandatory benchmarks required for a school code. So, what I had to do behind the scenes is take a look at our contract as it stands and review some benchmarks through the DPI, submit that to the DPI, and hopefully, once the contract is renewed, if it's renewed, we will be in full compliance with what the DPI would like to have included in that contract. And lastly, we seek, Alps seeks to continue as a district-authorized charter school. So, a lot of great things happening at Alps, but a lot of the changes to the contract itself are really in some wording. Really, there aren't any significant changes to how we do business at Alps. We really had to change some wording to be in compliance with what the DPI would like us to do. We're changing from a governance, or a governing council to a governing board, per that DPI requirement. Sibling preference language was updated to better reflect state statute. Charter schools randomly select students if more students apply for admission than space is available at the school. And a little bit later, we'll just talk briefly that that has been the case. We have had a waiting list to get into the school, and we do use a random selection process. However, that process must give preference to siblings of students that are currently in the program the previous year. And then also, we needed to update how we describe some of our metrics related to school goals and how we measure those goals, and they update our current assessment language. A quick example of that is we now use the iReady diagnostic tool, which is something more than what we might use at our other, say, middle schools. So, we use that diagnostic tool to gauge one year's annual growth with our kids, which is in our contract. And then lastly, you'll hear more about that when our performance on those goals is reported at the end of the report in June of this year.
I would just like to say, I'm very happy to see the language that would allow preference given not only to the students currently enrolled, but also to siblings. I know that's been an issue in the past for some families, and that's been particularly hard for people to understand when they have one child in and they have a total of two children, and they'd like that second child to have that same Alps experience. So, I'm glad to see that language changed.
Yes, and I would agree, especially when we draw students from all over the district to Alps, so these aren't necessarily kids in our neighborhood. So, transportation to and from Alps Charter School is a requirement for parents, and they're not bust.
Thank you.
So, next slide. Okay, governing board. A relatively new change that has not been in place in the past is, the current structure is that Alps governing board is not an LLC, a limited liability company. The governing board is currently working on meeting this benchmark, so I've been working with the DPI, Ms. Conrad and Ms. Schnorr, to see if we can incorporate per DPI requirement. That's something that's a very recent requirement through the DPI. So, that's something we're working on currently and wanted to inform you of that.
I have a question. Did I do that? Sorry for interrupting. Does that change, would that change create, because currently, right now, we would be tax-exempt from any purchases, but when you create a limited liability corporation-
It's just the governing board.
It's just the governing board.
Yes.
Got it. All right, thank you.
They have to show that they're independent of the school district.
Got it.
And so, once again, we haven't got some answers back. We've been asking a lot of questions because we want to support Alps as they go down this journey and to meet this requirement, so we're still waiting on additional information.
Okay.
Okay, Alps meets and exceeds charter goals. So, 98.9% of Alps students performed at the proficient or advanced level on life and career skills during the 2017-18 school year. Kind of our plateau there, what we shoot for is 85%, so they're performing at 98.9. So, our Alps students work hard, respectful, and are really showing strong and positive skills as it relates to careers and those overall employability skills. 92.8% of parents were satisfied. We survey them at the end of each year. We're satisfied or highly satisfied with the Alps program. 85% satisfaction is the goal there, so we are performing well there, and we have performed consistently well. I can speak to, since the school has been in the Tipler building, we have always had a very high satisfaction rate amongst parents. The number of applications to attend Alps Charter School continues to outnumber the available seats. Alps enrollment is capped at 60, so we are full at 60. A total of 27 families submitted official applications to an Alps in the 2017-18 school year. We then use a lottery process per the contract agreement to select students to fill 12 open seats. So, some kids and families did not get in, but we do use a random selection process. We film that process, and it can be reviewed at any time. And then, lastly, Alps continues to receive an accountability rating of significantly exceeds expectations. So, this is that school report card score. We do really, really well. 95.8 was our score for the 2017-18 school year.
Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Jones or this?
No, when it was moved over, you had a box in the wall there, the time box.
Yeah, because both Tipler and Alps opened a time capsule.
Right. So, what was interesting is we celebrated our 50th anniversary of being open last year, and I had no idea that we had a time capsule. So, what happened is, a couple of teachers that were there in 1967 came forward and said, hey, behind the concrete year display is a time capsule, and they recommended strongly that we open that at the 50-year mark, it's actually our 51st year, and then review those contents. Those teachers were invited to a presentation in their gym, and then the idea is, we're going to put some items into that time capsule, place it back, and reseal it.
And I'm very sure that our Alps students are going to be involved in that process.
Absolutely. Our Alps students would be involved in that process as well, because they are now part of our building. If I could just make a few comments, you know, just real quick, you know, a lot of great things are happening at Alps. You know, we have First LEGO League there. You know, we talked about Wave Robotics a little bit earlier. Many of the kids on the Wave Robotics team maybe started on the Alps First LEGO League team. But our Polystyrians are heading to Arkansas for a competition here in May. We're also taking a field trip, extensive field trip to Washington, DC in May with our Alps family, so a lot of really exciting learning opportunities for our kids.
Beautiful. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Jones, I would just like to thank you for the leadership you've given to Alps over these many years, having been involved with the governing board over at Jacob Shapiro. I know that we benefited greatly from your leadership in developing bylaws for Alps, which were seen as models for other charter schools. So, I want to personally thank you for the leadership you've provided over these many years to not only Perry Tipler, but also to Alps, and for Ms. Conrad for the leadership she provides in overseeing all the charters in the district. So, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. Moving on, then, we have an image campaign funding workshop next.
All right, thank you. You know me, Kim Brown, and I have with me Bill Wyman, who is the CEO, President of the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation. And Bill has been instrumental in the image campaign, and so we wanted to make sure he was here as well.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks for coming.
All right, so it's been a few years since we've come and shared with you a little bit about the image campaign, but you'll remember that we came together, we had some key partner organizations that said, hey, we're really interested in helping to improve the perceptions of our internal and external audience and to create a stronger community. And we were really excited because we had STUR, who we had interviewed and was going to do some work, and you might remember some of the work that they did with some of the great billboards and such. However, we did, as a leadership team, come together as an image campaign leadership team, and really thought we needed to go in a different direction and make it more local. STUR was amazing with their creative ability, which we absolutely adored. However, with them being so far away, I think it was hard to have some of the things that needed to happen, happen. So, we went through the process again.
We, as we went through this, we learned a lot locally, and STUR, they did a great job, but they wanted to put a lot more emphasis on social media and Facebook and all that type of things, and we felt that instead of doing that, there's other ways to get involved in the community and support our image. So, that was one of the reasons we redirected our campaign. Also, when we started with STUR, we felt the big thing that we had to address was the pride in our community, the people that lived here weren't proud of living here, and we felt that was the most important thing. Over time, we found that attraction and retention is, we feel, just as or even more important. And through this whole time, the economy has changed too. You can tell by, you know, the labor force or the unemployment rate, we need to have strong people in this community. So, we felt that keeping the people here and retaining and attraction is very important. So, that's kind of the new direction that we're headed now.
Correct. So, we went through the RFP process again, and this time, Kandeo Creative is the organization that was chosen. So, again, they're here in Oshkosh, and so they know more about perhaps where we need to go. They have met with all of the organization groups to interview us, to find out specifically about where we are. So, Katie Neiman and myself were interviewed along with UW-Oshkosh, Fox Valley Tech, but they really wanted the education lens, thinking about that all the way through, and so they did that with us, but they also did that with different various focus groups.
There was a focus group of the city and the county, and the chamber, and GoEDC, kind of the economic development area, and then the community foundation and the CVP and EA were also in a group. So, they kind of looked at the different types of organizations and interviewed them all in the group.
So, an important piece is probably this slide right here for all of you, is to know where are we going. And so, I'm going to, I mean, you don't usually read slides, but really, you need to know these are the main pieces on here. So, long-term goals with Oshkosh branding is to improve that overall perception of Oshkosh, position Oshkosh as a high-growing community, and increase awareness of Oshkosh's attractions and events. Of course, we want to attract new residents to the community and welcome senior-level and executive-level talent. Of course, converting more of our Oshkosh graduates into Oshkosh employees and wanting them to come back here and then create career advancement opportunities. The project goals are to create effective communication between all partners, simplify partner participants, and stay within our budget parameters. It's important. The marketing goals, you can see, create a unified voice for Oshkosh, and you're going to see there's some things that Kandeo is already looking at to make sure that we have a unified voice among all of our organizations. And part of that is with a website hub, that anybody who goes to that website hub, like any of our organizations, it'll be there, and we can help draw one another to each other, if that makes sense. Of course, fostering positive engagement on social platforms, that has already been started by Stephanie, a great deal with Positively Oshkosh, but they want to build off of that. Generate a landing page traffic. Create shareable content for partners. Build community pride, and create a cohesive content and messaging that resonates with the partner organizations and the greater community, and you'll see what they, how they're thinking about playing with that. And then, of course, project goals, obtain 90% partner participation for major campaign decisions, and obtain 90% partner participation for social media shares. And then you can see some of the marketing goals of what they also would like to have So, this is like, to me, the exciting part.
Before we go there-
Yep.
-one of the big things in attraction and retention is talking to the employers throughout this city and talking about recruitment. So, we have talked to five different organizations or companies, and all of them have been very supportive of this whole campaign. Different companies have different needs. Of course, Oshkosh Corp., we've spoken to, and they need, they just need all levels of employees. We've talked to smaller companies that need more line-type people, and we've talked to Evergreen, and they're looking for this campaign to be a way to recruit actually customers, elderly people to come to Oshkosh and live. So, we're seeing a lot of different ways that this campaign can work, and as Kim said, the landing page and the website, we want the employers to use that right away. We met with Aurora, and Aurora said that they do a very good job of telling the people about Aurora and their employees, like the doctors that come to Aurora. They're really concentrated on what Aurora's all about, what their practice is, but many times, they don't, they don't take the time or spend the time to learn about the community. And of course, the trailing spouse and the family and all that, the community is just as important as the job. So, Aurora was excited about what we're doing to help with that side of it. So, then, creative, that's kind of where you're going, Kim. We, I have to look at my timeline. I just had it up. The timeline, they did the discovering research back in October through March, they did creative April through May, which is, this is the start, and then in June, the actual campaign will launch, which will be a website and a video.
So, the only Oshkosh on the left top corner was kind of the one that seemed to be very appealing to people, but you can see the colors they're going to use, kind of the voice and tone and the messaging that they're looking at. And so, they really wanted to play with our "O" of only Oshkosh and do some alliteration pieces with that. And so, they had talked about, you know, only Oshkosh, originally Oshkosh, Oshkosh Outdoors, et cetera. And they, some of their initial pieces are kind of fun to see what could be created out of that. So, some of the possible strategy elements that they talked about, we already talked about the website piece. Of course, social media is something that we would want to do, and we talked about kind of the playing on the "O"s. And they also want the community to be involved in that marketing, in that social media piece, and they have some ideas around that as well. I love the idea of a welcome kit. It's supposed to really be a touch point for prospective residents as they come, and I think something that is very needed. We felt it was needed, but they actually did the research, and it's needed. How about that? And then, of course, video marketing, we know, is effective. And then, this is just a review of what you saw a couple of years ago as part of our image campaign, the memorandum of understanding that we have financial and/or in-kind piece to it. The financial ask was $20,000 for three years, and we are taking that out of Fund 80. We have already taken two years' worth from Fund 80. And then, of course, to promote the campaign within our organization and stakeholders as appropriate. Both myself and Katie are representing the Oshkosh Area School District in the image campaign. We provide access to previously completed research, and so part of it is just attending the meetings, going to the focus groups, and what else can we do to help support. The fundraising and coordination with the backbone organization, and then utilize campaign messaging, et cetera. And those are some of the pieces that, if there's some things that are being generated by us with Katie, that's something that would be shared with Kandeo in order to help effectively market those pieces together.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Seems pretty exciting. It's nice to have an aligned message.
It's so nice. Yeah, it'll be very exciting.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wyman, thank you so much for continuing time out. You're absolutely the guy.
Well, I appreciate everything all of you do. It's, our school district is great. My neighbor was just accepted to go to MIT, so that says a lot about Oshkosh, so that was really cool. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the wellness progress update with Sue Schnorr and Diane Vogel. Next, we have the Wellness Progress update with Sush Noor and Diane Vogel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm sure all of you know Diane Vogel. She is our wellness coordinator. We have two different committees that kind of look at wellness. The first one is our Strategic Benefits Committee, but they're more focused on the employee benefit part, specifically health insurance. They look at all employee benefits, but specifically health insurance. They, the membership is, we have representation from all different, all of our employee groups, so food service, NTEA, teachers, administrators, all groups are represented. They're really tasked with reviewing existing benefits. They are the first to preview or review any potential changes. They work with us, the District on Communication Strategies. They review and update our strategic plan that we have for benefits, along with our benefits consultant associated, and they promote good consumerism of healthcare. So, that's kind of the focus of the Strategic Benefits Committee. Then, we have what's called the Partners in Health Committee, and their focus is on employee wellness. They have representation from all buildings, so they have 26 sites or 26 members. It's led by Diane, and she has a six-member steering committee. The committee actually started 28 years ago, so they've been in existence for quite a while. And their tasks, as I've listed here, and Diane's going to talk a little bit more about what their activities are, they're currently funded by our health insurance company. So, now, if that were to ever change, that might change that dynamics, but for now, their entire budget is funded by our health insurance company. So, I'll turn it over to Diane to talk a little bit about what their activities are and what they do.
First of all, I'd like to say that each of our 26 sites has a building captain, and I have these six people that serve as my steering committee, and all of these people are volunteers, and they put in a great deal of time. And every success that we've had with our program is due to their hard work, and they're very dedicated, and this is all volunteer done outside of their classroom responsibilities. One of our big responsibilities is the health risk assessment. We've been doing this for seven years. We test all employees and their spouses, all retirees and their spouses. This is 2,100 people. We do this in July, June and July. They come to, we usually do this at Shapiro. They have appointments that they schedule online through Helix, and they, this is a Venus draw. It's a very extensive blood panel that they have done. Through Helix, we do this for $67. If they were to do this through their doctor, it would be between $300 and $400. So, we encourage them to use this, the results from their panel, and take this to their doctor for their annual physical. We've been very happy with Helix because they bring trained lobotomists. Lots of people can draw blood, but only trained lobotomists do it well.
True.
So, we like very much working with Helix. And this is all they do. They go around the country and just do these biometric screenings. And they, after the screenings, they receive a 29-page booklet of all kinds of information from all the testing that was done. And we have had between 97% to 98% participation in the screening. And if they don't participate, then their premium goes up 5%. So, that's a pretty good incentive to participate. And we have, if they score, they get a score out of 100, and if they score 70 or below, then they need to participate in a telephonic conference call with a coach, health coach from Helix. And only 23% of our participants did score 70 or below, which accounts to of about 461 people. And of those 461 people, only 12 failed to participate in the telephonic conference call. I'm sure that all people don't enjoy this conference call. If you surveyed them, they wouldn't all say it was the best experience of a lifetime. But our, all of our advisors tell us, if we don't do some kind of follow-up, we lose ground with these people. And we have a score out of, an average score out of 100 for all of our employees of 81.4, which is a pretty good score. Helix is very proud of us. The president of Helix comes for our aggregate report. He feels that some good things are taking place here in Oshkosh. In fact, he wanted to come for our first day get-together in the fall, but he's also going to the WELCOA convention that day, so he's unable to come. But we have shown, in the years of the six years that we've done this, we have shown improvement in blood pressure. We still have some concerns about weight, but then, the whole country has concerns about the weight, so we are not terribly unique in that situation. We are, we also have flu clinics that we, we have four, four staff. This year, we tried to improve participation, so we find that incentives work very well. We offered people an opportunity to enter a drawing for 20, for $50 or $100 chamber certificate, so we improved participation by 100. We had close to 1,000 people participate in our flu clinics. So, we'll keep working on that, and we'll keep trying to get that number larger. We still have people who think you get the flu from having the flu shot, so this is a mindset that we have to keep working on. We have, Helix has hired a very dynamic health coach, and so, just this past week, he has gone into two of our sites to work with individuals on weight, stress, any topic health-related that they're interested in. And his first school was Tipler, and the response was just fantastic. So, later this week, he will be going to Webster, and it's going so well that we're going to introduce him to the staff at West and Elementary School. So, we think this is a real plus, if he can start working with individuals. We hope we can keep this going. We also have, our theme this year has been mindful wellness, and a gal that actually worked with me at Tipler many, too many years ago for me to tell you. But she has started a business with this whole mindful wellness approach to help, and she goes all around the country to do this. And she has done three presentations. Our building captains meet every quarter, and she has done three so far on mindful wellness. First, just an introduction of what it is. Then, she did one on stress. She's done one on weight, body mass issues, and then, the last one will be this, coming up this quarter, will be on exercise and meditation. And then, she does her presentation, our tech guys do a podcast, and this is available to all of you. They're 15 minutes in length, and they're on our wellness portal, and they are amazing. 15 minutes in length, and it's a very, it's an excellent use of 15 minutes of your time. I really encourage you to spend 15 minutes looking at these podcasts. And so, this is our whole approach to wellness this year, and you'll find that you're going to be hearing more and more about mindful wellness. Right now, we're doing an LOL Fitness Challenge that's six weeks in length, and what we're hoping to get people to do is not only exercise, but there are many, we tend to think that wellness is just body mass or exercise and weight, but there are many dimensions to wellness. And this is a stressful time of the year for teachers. So, we're in this challenge, we're trying to get people to do 30 minutes, four times or five times a week of cardio, but also 30 minutes of some kind of relaxing activity like taking a walk, reading a book, visiting with a friend, trying a new hobby. So, this is a current activity that we're working on right now. Because we have 26 sites, we found that total district activities don't work very well. So, we offer all of our 26 sites what we call mini-grants, and they can request funding up to about $300 for an activity that they tailor to their particular site. And we've had a lot of success with this. We have fitness activities. A lot of them get a grant for a yoga instructor, a Pilates instructor, or a healthy cooking class, or a chair massages. They come up with some really creative activities, and it works well for their particular staff. And now, we're also trying to bring down insurance usage. And so, we have posters that we are distributing. We have a magnet that we distributed to every employee. We send it to every retiree, and we hope that providing information for alternate activities, rather than go to the emergency room, rather than go to your doctor, use some of these alternative activities that are less costly, maybe we can bring down insurance usage. We are partnering with the city and county to offer a nice variety of free wellness classes. They are at Oaklawn, and participation has been not as great as we would like, but we're getting participation, and so, that's important. Have I forgotten any things?
Just that we have a wellness portal, and I gave you a link in the PowerPoint. It provides a lot. It's kind of a one-stop shop for information, and that's also where those videos are on the mindfulness.
But one of the things we learned at the last WELCOA conference is that there is a lot of research that shows that when employees feel valued, they are much more effective in their job. And having a wellness program is a way of showing employees that they are valued. And we have, if not the oldest, one of the oldest wellness programs in the city, and I think that shows that the district is committed to their employees.
Our health insurance company does, also does a lot of challenges and activities, and our Strategic Benefits Committee puts out information, but a lot of those are focused on employees that have health insurance, whereas the Wellness Committee or the Partners in Health Committee really focuses on all employees. A lot of their activities, or most of their activities, are regardless of whether you're on the district's health insurance or not. So, I think that that's a great focus for that, for that group. And this was just a sample, it shows you what the magnet looked like that we distributed to all employees. We've received the Well Workplace Award twice. I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about that?
This, the city wanted to become a well-city, which they did become, and they really didn't get very much recognition for it. But in order to become a well-city, they needed 20% of the employees of the city to be involved in the Well Workplace Award. And since we are one of the biggest employers of the city, there was a lot of pressure on us to work toward a Well Workplace Award. It's a lot of work, and if you look on one of the screens, yeah, they're right there, there are five interventions that you have to complete, and it takes an enormous amount of documentation. It's about a 50-page application, way, way more work, I think, than it needs to be. But we, the first time, we had a silver award, we were one and a half points from the gold. Then, this second time that we did it, they're good for three years, and then, they expire. And if you want to continue to be a well workplace, you have to go through the entire process again. And then, this last time in 2018, we became a gold.
Then, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Teladoc program. Now, this is through our health insurance. It was one of the strategies GHT Group Health Trust implemented to help reduce costs. So, this started in January. It allows people to call a doctor rather than going to urgent care or incurring an office visit. So, if you have a smartphone, you can actually be in a, in a conference with a doctor. And it's, it's been incredibly popular. Our health, GHT was so impressed at the number of people that registered. Now, it probably helped that we offered some prizes for people who would register, but we had approximately 25% of our eligible population registered, and our health insurance company was just ecstatic about that. So, by the end of February, anyone who registered by the end of February were in for a drawing for three Fitbits and an iPad, so I think that helped people to register. And they estimated that it saved $51,900 in medical claims. So, they were able to, they calculated how much the people who called Teladoc would have cost if they did an emergency room or an office visit. So, I mean, that's some pretty significant savings for just starting the program in January. So, they're extremely pleased with that. It's just one of those things that we have to keep in front of employees, and so, I'm working with Katie on a kind of a regular correspondence out to employees, reminding them of all the things they have available to them.
Right.
So, that is kind of what we're doing in wellness, and we'll open it up to any questions.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on the wellness program? Well, I want to thank you both for your dedication to this. I know Diane, you've been involved with this for many years. I don't know how many, but I know it's quite a few. Since you left Tipler, where they recently opened up the Time Capsule, so we thank you for your dedicated service to the district.
Her and her committee does a fabulous job. It's fun to work with.
I had no idea that, that we had all that. That's amazing. And I know we're struggling with claims right now. I can't even imagine how bad they'd be if we didn't have a great program like what you, what you and the volunteers do. So, thank you. That's...
It's a total team effort. I just, amazing team of hard-working people.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. And our final workshop tonight is the 19, excuse me, 2019 to 2020 calendar with Dr. Brown, Ms. Conrad, and Ms. Pinkston.
Yes, thank you.
Another team effort here.
All right. And we thought that it might be helpful just to go through and say if there's any changes every month. Otherwise, the calendar's going to look very much like it did this year. Okay? So, we are still starting after September 1st, per the law. So, you'll see, after Labor Day, we begin, and you're going to see nine early release days throughout the calendar year. That has not changed. October, you can see the fall conferences that we have in place. October 25th has traditionally been a no-school day, and we are continuing that day for many reasons, mostly because there are, our art, music, people have a conference they can attend, and then, they can all attend it without having a sub, is one piece of it. That, and students actually are in school on that day then, too, or they don't have school. So, it's a day that, when we tried having school, many students were absent. Let me put it that way. Thank you. Sorry. November, our November days, you can see, we just have our Thanksgiving break, and then, of course, conferences that are in the AM. December, there's really no difference in that one. January, we are continuing our January 20th Professional Development and Record-Keeping Day on the 20th. And then, February, we would like to continue that no-school, that professional development for staff in AM, PM, and this was one of the days that we... And this was one of the days that we are working with the CESA-6 organization to bring in some of the national speakers. All right, and then in March is our testing, and I know we're going to be making some changes as far as what our freshmen, sophomore, and seniors are going to do, so.
So during that day, you know, one of our goals in the calendar committee was to embed as many inclement weather days as possible, and to be creative in how we can get those inclement weather days. So one thing we are going to pilot is on that March 3rd day, looking at that as an online learning day, so we can recapture that for the high school. Because as you know, both elementary and middle school have plenty of instructional minutes and days, and it's really the high school that is our area that we need to add minutes.
So we're looking just the full day, not the half-day? That'd be kind of hard. The full day.
The full day. That's where we want to start, and that will help us lay the groundwork for exploring that.
April, just the early release and no school, which has traditionally been Good Friday, but we are going to keep that as a no-school. And then May, again, it doesn't look any different from past years. June does. So as we were working as a calendar committee, and Dr. Cartwright, her first year here, of course, we get five snow days, right?
Yeah.
And hopefully not six.
Right? And so knowing that we had so many days and not wanting to come back into the same situation that we had this year, we worked on what can we do in order to make things better in the future. And so one of the things we're doing is, it'll be one hundred and seventy-seven days, and we can do that because we can add eleven minutes onto the high school, and then we will be building in additional time. And so that's a big piece of what we're doing for next year.
So you are building, you're adding eleven?
We are adding eleven minutes onto the school day in this calendar. And that's how we end on June 3rd, and June 4th would be a half-day record-keeping. Now, if we go and we have a sixth snow day, we would be moving June 4th into the last day.
So I don't know if you have passed this, I can't remember about working, about how this works, or maybe I could just wait and ask questions after.
I think the next slide will clarify that.
I think this is the slide you need. So you can see there are one hundred and seventy-seven student contact days for the 2019-20 calendar. Elementary and middle schools do have the allotted DPI minutes to run the one hundred and seventy-seven days. We are adding eleven minutes to meet the DPI guidelines, and that'll give us four point eight one built-in snow days. But then that virtual online day that Julie was talking about, that adds an additional day, so a total of five point eight one snow days. And then if we need more than that, we would use June 4th as a snow makeup day.
Which would be six point eight one days.
Right.
Which we have.
Point eight one days.
Yes. Well, we may need, we may need late start.
Early release or late start?
Late start.
Late start.
So the one caveat is that as we move up that time, eleven minutes for the high school students, it does have an effect on the elementary students in the fact that there are three schools that the pickup times will be five minutes earlier than they currently are. School will still start at seven forty-five for elementary schools, but the students will be picked up.
The bus will be picking up the students at the same time at home, dropping them off five minutes early, no?
You can't do that.
No. No, the students will still be dropped off at seven forty-five, but they're going to have to start their pickup five minutes earlier. So if a student was picked up at six thirty, they would be picked up at six twenty-five.
Okay.
And they, because one of the things we were nervous about is if they were going to back up the whole schedule to eleven minutes, but they were really good at looking at the schedule and working with us to the bus company. And so that's something they can do. The other option that is up there is if we want to keep the pickup times to be at the regular times now, then we would have to get a bus for the west side and for the south side, and that would be a cost of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars per bus. The concern, I would say, for Lakeside and Oakwood is the seven fifteen time. It's early, it's hard to get a staff member there to do duty at seven fifteen. It's been a struggle for them to get one, a person at seven twenty, and so, of course, the principals are a little nervous about seven fifteen.
So the students at Lakeside and Oak, at all three of these schools, they are, so they're seven thirty, seven twenty, seven twenty. So this is just bringing the students there five minutes earlier?
Correct.
Okay.
We just wanted to make sure the board knew that this did have an impact on the elementary students.
So are you going to bring something back to the board that we get to, that we're going to have to decide whether we want to do five minutes earlier or want to do two more buses?
I think that's up to the board.
If all possible, during discussion tonight, we'd like just to hear from the board tonight and kind of get an idea of what the general opinion of the board is at this point in time. And then at our next board meeting, we will be coming forward with a recommendation.
So that brings you to your conversation.
I had a quick comment, being that I heard from so many families how pleased they were that the school district and UWO were aligned this year, and I was happy to see that it's aligned for spring break. Thanks. That spring break is aligned next year, too. So I'm glad that that worked out.
Yeah, we did hear really positive feedback from that as well. And so that was something, and it just so happens that it works out really well as far as semester exam being right in the middle.
It's right in the middle of the semester meets for a great grade.
Perfect. Right, it's a win-win.
I wanted to make a comment also about graduation being on a Monday night and a Wednesday night during the week. I think most graduations are during the week. As a parent and from what I've heard from other community members, I am so thankful that we're going that route. I think it is absolutely heartbreaking that we have children going to state sporting events, track and so forth, and have to miss walking graduation. There's, that's just not okay, you know, for a lot of parents. So I'm so ecstatic that we are going to evening graduations and having them two different times, and I just, I thank you, I appreciate that, you know, that's going to be.
And that came as a result of the feedback from families saying that this was something they would prefer, and we did check with the athletic directors to make sure that there were no state meets happening on that Monday and Wednesday.
Right, yeah. They're that weekend, particularly track is that weekend, and I know a lot of students miss walking graduation if they have track, so that's difficult that weekend, so I appreciate. That's good, I like that.
And we're still using the nominee arena?
We are. Yep, and they've been fabulous to work with, so we're very blessed.
I do have a question with the June calendar. So June 1st is West High graduation, according to this calendar. Does that mean if we were to continue this calendar approach?
They flip.
They would flip, so then North would be first in 2021.
Correct.
My other question is, for this June 2020, if graduation for West is on June 1st, what is the last day of school for our seniors in each school?
The last day of school would be, if we can flip back to May, the last would be Friday, the 29th. It would be the last day of school for seniors. And that would be consistent for both North and West? Because we would be wrapping everything up and making sure everything's ready to go for graduation.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Just comment, I think that a five-minute earlier start is a pretty small ask to do.
Or drop-off, yeah, five-minute drop-off.
As opposed to spending almost fifty thousand dollars on two more buses.
I have a question.
Mr. Fisher?
So what time are, what time are teachers supposed to be on-site in the morning?
So they usually, like, they can be on-site at seven thirty, so what has been challenging is to stagger times, and so it's our paraprofessionals that will probably most likely need to be there at seven fifteen, because we can stagger their time, but that also means that they'll be leaving earlier.
Okay. So do we know what that economic, what that financial impact is? I mean, if they have to be there earlier, I mean, obviously we're savings because they're leaving earlier than.
There is, it's a wash, because they start and end at the same time. The only impact would be if the principals come back and say, "We really absolutely need them here ten minutes longer," or something like that. I don't know.
So being there earlier, is that something that is, is that a time issue for those staff persons that would need to be there, to be there, you'd like to be there ahead of time? Because you alluded to that being a time of struggle.
It's difficult to get staff to want to be there, like, to start their day at seven fifteen. That has been a past struggle for the schools.
And so we're really only talking about three schools?
Really just two schools. Franklin, seven twenty-five, that's not going to, I talked to Jamie Cole, and she said that will not make it, she's very fine with that. Yep, she does not feel like that's going to be troublesome at all for their staff.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Do a lot of, Lakeside and Oakwood, I mean, my, I know Lakeside quite a bit better, obviously, because my kids went there. What is the percentage, or I guess the use of buses for those schools? Because those are still, they're so, that's pretty high.
Lakeside is pretty high.
Yeah.
Oakwood, not as much, but Lakeside.
So it affects quite a.
But I don't know the percentage, so.
But it's quite, it's the highest, yeah. That's what I thought, okay.
We can get that for the next board meeting, though.
Oh, no, I don't. Yeah, whether it's higher, I know Lakeside is very high, and Oakwood, but it's high too, because it's way up there, okay.
Any other comments or questions?
Like Mr. Evans, I'm reluctant to commit to nearly fifty thousand dollars in two more buses, because we don't know what our state aid will be for the coming year, and we don't know what the staffing requests or other requests might be coming before the board. So that's, to me, that's a sizable number to commit to without knowing those data. And there have been predictions on the passage of the state budget that range from the end of June to October, so.
And one person said never.
I haven't heard that one.
Anyway, we, the bottom line is, we simply don't know when we're going to know what the state aid will be and what additional dollars might be coming to the district. So if the schools can make this work, and if families are comfortable with just five more minutes, it's not eleven minutes, it's five, perhaps saving money on those buses is the way to go.
The buses by the end of, I mean, by the month or two into school, those buses are, I mean, my daughters get picked up eleven minutes later now than the beginning of the school year. Like, it keeps, even just two weeks ago, it has been consistently two minutes later again. Like, it keeps getting later every time, yeah. So I don't think I've ever had a school year where the numbers didn't start to fall back when the bus drivers know their bus route, and they get pretty quick about it, and the kids get on there, yes.
There are efficiencies that happen.
Yeah, yeah. And we've already, we were expecting eleven minutes this year, so we're good.
Well, big thanks to you and to the calendar committee for working on this. I know the calendar is always an interesting topic and a challenging one, and can be challenging in putting it together and looking to meet as many needs and as much input as possible. So I do appreciate the work that has gone into this to bring it to us today.
Absolutely, Dr. Cartwright. I just want to give an additional thank you, because quite candidly, they brought me a few calendars, and we kept revising to ensure that we came up with one of the most efficient ones that we could in order to account for potential inclement weather, such as what we're receiving right now. And it also brings us more into alignment with the Fox Valley school districts and the number of days for which students attend school throughout the valley as well.
And the days, the time that high schoolers get out. We were one of the earlier schools in the valley, weren't we?
Well, and again, we're pulling the eleven minutes on the front end of the day.
Oh, okay. Oh, it's in the beginning of the day?
Correct.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Because we had added three minutes last year to the end of the day, and so we really did need to balance that out.
Oh, okay, that's even better.
Yeah, it is. It does put us more in alignment.
If you align the eleven minutes at the end of the day, it would be difficult with sports and stuff, and everybody leaving, yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
And we also listen to our community and listen to our high school students. Where it's a little easier to put it at the beginning than the end, that way it doesn't interfere with after-school activities.
Thank you.
So we'll look forward to voting on this on the 24th of April.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on, we need to address the consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Are there any items that the board wishes to pull tonight? I'd like to pull one B, so we can move forward with resolution, we only have two resolutions in this part of the agenda, so we'll move on to resolution one A as soon as I find it. Okay, be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the appointments, resignations, and salaries as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved?
Suck it. Please call the roll.
Resolved?
Aye.
Holmstead?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Harlan?
Aye.
Eliasen?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Ocean Carey?
Thank you very much. Resolution one B, be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the retirements as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved?
Suck it. I had asked to pull this one again, because when I received the board packet, I was really surprised at this list of individuals. We don't usually have people retiring at age thirty, but then it occurred to me, they might have been hired at age thirty, and they're not age thirty anymore, but they are ready to engage in retirement and move on to that next age and stage of life. I actually taught a couple of these people in classes at UW-Oshkosh, and so I have some history with a couple of these people. Dan Garten is retiring as a social studies teacher at Merrill Middle School, where he has served since, well, he's served the district since 1989. I think he's always been at Merrill. Jerry Johnson, technology and engineering teacher, is ending his career at Oshkosh North High School. He's been with the district for approximately twenty-eight years. Lori Mangan, a third-grade teacher at Oakwood Elementary School, has been with the district since 2001, so eighteen years. Doug Nimke, building custodian for Oshkosh North High School, I know he's served at some other buildings during his tenure here, so he's been with the district approximately thirty-four years. Kay Rochelle, a third-grade teacher from Oakwood Elementary, started here in 1990, so she will have been here roughly twenty-nine years. Preesi Sasha Vedra, Oshkosh North High School. I hired her in the summer of 1989 to come to Oshkosh from her position in Minnesota to work with our English, what was then English as a Second Language Program, now our ESOL program. She's been serving as a Spanish teacher for a number of years, and she has been here roughly thirty years. And finally, Suzanne Wilder, a speech and language pathologist at Oshkosh West High School, has served the district since 1990. I really want to thank these people for their dedicated service to the children and families of this district. I continue to be in awe of the quality of people we have been able to attract and retain in this district, and the contributions that they have made to the success of our students. So I want to thank these people and wish them well in retirement, although we're losing a lot of institutional memory as these people cross the threshold into retirement. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Holmstead?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Harlan?
Aye.
Eliasen?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Resolved?
Aye.
Ocean Carey?
Thank you very much. This doesn't usually happen at our board meetings, that we have an individually considered resolution, but we do so tonight. When we opened up the school year with staff at the end of August, we had a theme of celebration, and we're doing that this evening, though it's bittersweet as we say goodbye to a dedicated school board member, and we will be welcoming a new school board member the next time we meet on April 24th. Resolution number two is a commendation of departing board member. Be it resolved that Steve Eliasen be commended for his contribution to the Oshkosh Area School District as a member of its Board of Education. Steve Eliasen has been a board member for nine years, serving as a member of the Facilities and Finance Committee, the Education Committee, the Energy Management Committee. and Finance Committee, the Education Committee, the Energy Management Committee, the Administrative Compensation Committee, the Partners in Education Committee, as well as the NTEA and IATSE, I-A-T-S-E Negotiations Committees, and on the Food Service Meet and Confir Liaison Team. Steve has served the Oshkosh Area School District as clerk for six years. Steve Eliasen for nine years has been a source of inspiration and innovation in the Oshkosh Area School District. Steve constantly asks the what-if questions to motivate the district to evolve and grow. His spirit of continuous improvement challenges those who work with him to view the world through different lenses and to achieve greatness in every endeavor. Steve has the unique ability to not only think outside of the box, but to imagine a world without boxes. He works diligently to ensure that students have opportunities to explore new possibilities and uncover new passions and interests. Every decision he makes is driven by the desire to empower our students to reach their greatest potentials. Steve is a strong advocate for all students and donated his time and talent to ensure that every student has the opportunity to explore the waters of Lake Winnebago. Thanks to Steve, hundreds of students were able to spend a day sailing, paddle boarding, or kayaking. In many cases, these students might not have had the opportunity to spend a day on the lake. We are grateful for his contributions to this program. Steve's ideas, energy, and enthusiasm are heartfelt. His genuine spirit is guided by kindness and compassion. We are grateful for his service to the Oshkosh Area School District. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution is forwarded to Steve Eliasen with the thanks. And best wishes of his colleagues on the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I wasn't aware you were finished yet.
I'm sorry.
I know, yeah, that was pretty.
I'm sorry. Is there any further discussion? I just want to say it's been a delight serving as a board member with you. I wrote down a few things because I was afraid my memory might not serve me very well. Steve, you've been a visionary and a proponent of this district being a destination district in addition that compares itself on national and international scales. You've been passionate about the district best serving its students and our community. During your tenure, you've supported the building of a new Oaklawn Elementary School, the remodeling of Lakeside Elementary School, as well as numerous facilities improvements throughout the district, which will benefit students and families for years to come. In addition, you've served the board well in the selection of two new superintendents for the district, including of course Dr. Vicki Cartwright. So is there anyone else who was able to speak at this time?
Yeah, I know. I'd love to, but I'll go.
I was just going to say that Steve, you were always the light in this windowless room.
Yeah.
You always brought great ideas, and going forward, you will be in my head.
Always, yeah.
And I will always think of, what would Steve say? How could we make this better? What ideas would Steve have? And I thank you for that.
Yeah, always, a little game I play, I always come up with descriptions of the people I serve on the board with. And I always looked at you as our spiritual leader. I think your vision, Kelly was saying that when she sat on this side of the room, she could tell me, are you going to be excited about something because the table kept moving.
It did, I would have to grab it. Because at the end of the night, our table would be over here, I'm like, Steve.
And you're not a big fan of technology. I think that's a fair statement to say. I remember during our search, when we were playing out days, we all had our phones out, but you had a.
It was big!
About a two-foot by a four-foot calendar. And I also noticed that sometimes you'd take notes with a Sharpie.
Yes.
From time to time. And I just have a limited edition stainless steel Sharpie marker for you. You can rule the world with a Sharpie. You can't have it. With your duct tape and a Sharpie, man.
Good. There's nothing you can't do.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
I want to share just a more of a personal note, and that is that in our family, Eliasen is a verb. And that there are times when there are certain people in my family in particular that really want things done just so. And sometimes I'll just say, it's okay, we're just going to Eliasen it this time. You will always be a verb in our family, Steve.
I'm honored to be a verb.
Any other comments or questions?
So Steve, I've known you for probably a good part of 15 years, long before you ever sat on the board. We were involved in some social justice stuff in the community, all together, and I got to say, I didn't really, really didn't know you yet. You really became who everyone's talking about around this table through your sailing programs, through being on this board, and changing our community in that way. And I really have to say that, thinking back to those really early times that we interacted with each other, nothing compared to what I know and know and love about what you've done in the Oshkosh community for Oshkosh students and the dreams that you've helped create. So I didn't get the liberty to have the table move that much sitting next to you, and I kind of feel left out by that.
Okay.
But the one thing, the one thing that I think is really exciting that people should know about you is that you're a big-picture person. And they follow you. You know, you walk into meetings and you'd be like, I just saw this ad campaign, I want you guys to see it. And you would bring in these large pieces of paper and say, we got to get stuff like this in our schools. And I think that's, that's one of the most exciting things about having worked with you, is that you're a big-picture person. And so many times, when we sit on these boards, we're forced to look at details, minor details, and really get into data and facts and all of that stuff. But you had this ability of just being able to talk to us about, here's the big picture. This is what we're going for. And we're all going to strive to try to have one ounce of being able to take that big-picture element and being able to personify it like you did. So my life is enriched for having met you and worked with you.
Right back to you.
And our community is enriched because you served in the manner that you did.
Thank you, that's very kind. And to everyone, that's very kind, and thank you. Am I supposed to be appropriate to maybe tie some things together here? I can't begin to thank my colleagues and friends on this board and previous boards, and superintendents, and executive team members, and of course, the staff. We've met, had a good pleasure of meeting in the schools, and of course, the families and students. I had no idea how enriching and profoundly beautiful and an opportunity for growth being a school board member would be. I thought it would be good, and I thought it would be worthwhile and meaningful, but it's been so much more than that. So much more really on the human side of things. And I'm just really thankful that in the course of my life, I had the chance to sit here and sit with you. I could go on a long time about it, but I'm just really grateful, and your kindness is deeply appreciated here at the meeting tonight. And going through the greatest challenge a family can have, and everybody's been so remarkably kind, and I've been wholly inadequate in thanking those for extending such measures of kindness. I am, I leave the board, as I said, thankful. We've been able to do so much, and I'm sure at times I was exhausting, or things seemed off-balance, or whatever term you want to it. And people on all walks were always very gracious, right? And some things worked and some things didn't, but on balance, it was just a wonderful, thankful ride. I've had the experience to have my perspective change rather dramatically, things that I thought were really so important, like image campaigns, and please, there's nothing to take away from that. It is important. It helps to have a healthy, vibrant, growing community. But things take a new perspective, right? I hope you're hearing this overwhelming thankfulness, that I think we did things that many places would have seemed unimaginable because we had open, good, patient, kind people on the receiving end of a lot of conversations and people who had to implement, and I'm really thankful for that. My hope in a way, and again, it's in a new perspective, I'm not apathetic, but things just feel different. But my hope would be that some of the things that maybe we didn't get to see to fruition, like getting our students north of the border, I always held as a dream, really because we have so close to a society that uses a different set of priorities, maybe healthcare or education, or sort of the common good in a more profound way that maybe we've chosen in the United States of America. Or there were these partnerships with top-level institutions, not that that's the endpoint for all of our students, but to maybe the whole standard of our practice rises, or we had this other conversation about, as Bill Lyman said, the MIT connection, right? And in part, and I want to go into a personal story or into healthcare per se, but I spent a lot of time around healthcare in the last six months. And I had no idea, looking at the data later on, kind of where Wisconsin Falls in the mix, or you can't help but think, you know, the number-one health system in the U.S. is 200 miles west of us, right, in Rochester, or the number-five health system is 400 miles east of us, at the University of Michigan, and the number-two medical school is 200 miles west of us, and the number-seven medical school is 400 miles east of us. And I, again, I don't want to talk about healthcare or any practitioners local or associations or healthcare providers, but isn't it just as likely that Fondland, Oshkosh, Appleton, Green Bay could have the top health system in the country, or the top public school system in the country? Or I guess I've been thinking a lot about Minnesota in the recent months, right, of these top private schools, you know, by rankings in the country, and top health systems, and the vibrancy of Minneapolis and Minnesota. And I guess I would just, if I could encourage or hope for something, it would be that maybe even more so than before, we just cultivate partnerships and we go to Northfield to see what they're doing with Hispanic students to bump up graduation rates, and wherever we can tag along with somebody doing really remarkable stuff, that we do that, and we set our sights there and make whatever progress we can. Please, in no way at all being critical of what we've done, we've done great things. I've been honored to have my name on what's happened over the last nine years. I mean that deeply. And yet, if we see the district keep going, it'd be a beautiful thing. I could go on a long time, or I could stop, but really, this is the end, thank you. Thank you for sharing your life and this experience with me, and I wish everybody the very best, and I will have this great place in my heart for everything that's happened here and all people that I've met.
Steve, you will be greatly missed.
You will too.
Well, before we get to our vote, we have two things to share with you. They may not be as important as the gold, excuse me, the gold.
Tape?
Duct tape. This is a grant certificate from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, signed by their current president Brett Hyde and the current executive director John Ashley, who says his regrets that he could not be here this evening. You are now eligible to join the emeritus group of board members for WASB, so thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
We also have made a very special plaque for you. And so, do I have to read it or you'll read it?
I think you should read it.
On behalf of the entire Oshkosh Area School District community, a sincere thank you is extended to Steve Eliasen in recognition of faithful service as a board, excuse me, as a member of the Board of Education, 2010 through 2019, dated this 10th day of April 2019.
It's beautiful. Thank you. Sentiments are wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Curry. And I think it's fitting that since you did all that ski stuff, that it's snowing out now.
On your back.
Like Haley's comet.
Right, you're Haley's comet. Sorry. I think it's time to call the roll. Heschel?
Aye.
Harlan?
Aye.
Eliasen?
Epstein.
Evans?
A reluctant aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Herzog? A second reluctant aye, yes. Holstead?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie. Thank you very much, and thank you, Steve. Are there any requests for future agenda items at this time?
I have one. I'd like for us to review the 5722 policy.
Good idea.
The student publications.
Oh, yes. Okay.
It was already set to come back to policy and governance.
Well, I want it on the board agenda because of what I have come to understand.
Okay.
Very good.
So you want it to.
It's a double check.
Go for, not go to policy and governance? Just comes straight here?
I don't care how it gets here.
Oh, okay. Okay.
If it's a policy change, normally we go to policy and governance first.
Absolutely.
And just for clarification only, because media had requested some additional information afterwards from me prior to trying to get in here so we could start. They asked, they had asked a couple things, clarify things. And first one was specifically to, is the policy going to be revised? And I explained to them that that was a board function. And they said, well, do you think that they're going to do that? And, you know, can you comment anything on that? And I said, I'll be very candid again, this is a board function, however, I would predict that more than likely, our board would be taking this up under consideration. So I wanted to publicly, I'm letting you know what my comments were. And then again, the second question was, would you do anything different than what you had previous, what you did already? And I explained to them, no, I would not, because as a government official, you know, someone who works, I have to, I'm required to put in the provisions to protect the rights of individuals, that there are laws that I have to abide by, number one. And number two, while the board creates policy, it is my responsibility to carry it out. So just for common knowledge, so I can tell you all at one time what my comments were.
Okay.
Related to the additional item to go on the board.
So moving on then to announcements, are there any announcements tonight? We're not, I know that we're not noticed to talk about this, but I can make an announcement that we had a listening session before this meeting this evening, and the commitment was made and reiterated tonight that the open records request that was alluded to in open forum will be met, so. And we will be reviewing that policy that was brought to our attention. Also, we have, the board has got a busy week coming up, the week of April 22nd. That's our reorganization meeting on Monday, April 22nd, excuse me, which will be followed by a learning session for the board, since we are a learning institution. We will have the first of two evenings that week dedicated to working with a publication called The Key Work of School Boards, which looks to improve board functioning, which then research suggests should permeate into improved student learning throughout the district. The second meeting that week on key work of school boards will be April 25th. And then we have a regularly scheduled board meeting for April 24th. So the week of the 22nd will be a busy one for the board, and I believe a very fruitful one. So we'll go from there. With that, we will adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the disciplinary data of specific persons under Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Perend I, Perend F. A review expulsion recommendation from expulsion hearing officer for a high school student who was engaged in conduct while at school or while under the supervision of a school authority which endangered the property, health, or safety of others, and engaged in conduct constituting repeated refusal or neglect to obey the rules under Wisconsin Statute 120.13, Perend I, Perend C, Perend E of Wisconsin statutes.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll. Harlan?
Aye.
Eliasen?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Holstead?
Aye.
Heschel?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie. Okay, so this meeting is now adjourned and we're going to executive session. And in the great Wisconsin tradition, if you can't do anything about.